has just finished their second educational site visit of the year at the Institute of Jazz Studies. Mr. Wayne Winborn, the Executive Director of the Institute graciously volunteered to lead us on a tour of the world's most foremost jazz archives and research library. I also want to thank people of his staff who took us around besides Mr. Winborn, Rhonda Marcker, Vinnie Piotti, Elizabeth Searls, and Diane Biono. Thank you, all of you, for a wonderful tour and very educational, and it's just marvelous, just marvelous. I'm going to ask Ms. Passa now to read a statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome members of the public to this open meeting, but also request that our audience respect the meeting space of the Board of Trustees and remain in the audience section so that the university is able to efficiently conduct its business and ensure other members of the public can hear the proceedings. Pursuant to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting was filed on June 23, 2023, with the Office of the Secretary of the State of New Jersey and three newspapers, the Cherry Hill Carrier Post, the New Brunswick News Tribune, and the Newark Star-Ledger. Public notice of the meeting was posted in the following university libraries, the Alexander Library in New Brunswick, the Dana Library in Newark, and the Robeson Library in Camden. Pursuant to Public Law 2020, Chapter 11, public notice of the meeting has been posted on the Rutgers website under governing boards. Now, I'd just like to query the members of the Board of Trustees. You've all seen the agenda and the meeting materials. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to disclose at this time? Seeing as there are none, we can continue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Secretary Passa. It's a very busy time at Rutgers now. To paraphrase the famous philosopher Ferris Bueller, "Life at Rutgers moves pretty fast. If you don't stop and look around once in a while, you could miss it." So before I update you on our progress with our Board of Trustees' goals, I just wanted to take some time to emphasize to all of you some important upcoming events. Rutgers Giving Days are tomorrow and Thursday. We have a number of board goals that revolve around our signature charitable effort, the Scarlet Promise Endowment. I ask you to consider making a donation to the Scarlet Promise Endowment tomorrow, if you have not done so already. In addition, I ask that you continue your efforts to reach out to your individual network of people, to ask them to support the Scarlet Promise Endowment tomorrow and Thursday. The email sent out by me and the leadership team to all of you on March 8 has some helpful links and QR codes that you can send out to your contacts. On March 7, you should all have received an invitation to a celebration honoring trustee emeritus Jim Dougherty in the establishment of the Perian, Alcatraz Endowed Chair and LGBTQ+ Public Health. This endowed chair will be funded through the vision and generosity of Jim. The reception will be held on Tuesday, April 2, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Rutgers Club in Piscataway. The RSC deadline is March 26, and I hope that your schedules allow you to join me at the celebration. Our Second Annual Board of Trustees Retreat is on Wednesday, April 10, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the Rockin Academic Success Center in Piscataway. We have prepared an informative program of four topics with three guest speakers for you. You will be receiving more detailed information by email and an RSCP for the retreat very shortly. The 64th Loyal Sons and Daughters Award Annual Gala will be held on Saturday, March 13, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Nielsen Dining Hall on the Douglas Campus in New Brunswick. Trustee Emeridai Mary Di Martino, Talak Lau, and Sandy Stewart will be honored with the highest award for volunteer service given by the university. The RSCP deadline is March 29, and I did provide a link to purchase tickets in my February communication to all of you. I hope that your schedules will allow you to join me in honoring Mary, Talak, and Sandy. The open hearing on the university's tuition fees, housing, and dining charges for 2024-25 will be held on Wednesday, April 24, 2024, in the multipurpose room of the College Avenue Student Center, Rutgers University, New Brunswick, and via Zoom from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The open hearing website is now live. On the website, students can register to speak at the hearing or submit comments to the board. Open hearing email blasts will be sent to all Rutgers students, encouraging them to participate. Students on the Rutgers, New Brunswick, Rutgers Health locations in Piscataway and Newark, Rutgers Newark and Rutgers Camden will be able to videoconference into the meeting by Zoom. The Rutgers Hall of Distinguished Alumni Induction Ceremony will be held on Thursday, April 25, from 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. at Stone House on Sterling Ridge in Warren, New Jersey. This event recognizes Rutgers graduates whose careers encompass transformative work that improve our lives and society. I did provide a link to purchase tickets to this event in my February communication to you. I hope that your schedules allow you to attend this special event. I do want to call your attention to all the numerous commencements and graduation ceremonies that occur at all of our schools on all of our campuses in May. The 258th Anniversary Commencement for Rutgers University, New Brunswick, and Rutgers Health will occur on Sunday, May 12. Rutgers University Camden Commencement will occur on Tuesday, May 14, and Rutgers University Newark Commencement will occur on Wednesday, May 15. If you have not returned the communication sent out by the Office of the Secretary on February 12 to all of you asking about your attendance at the numerous graduation ceremonies, I would urge you to do so as soon as possible. I would like to have at least one trustee or trustee emeridai attend every graduation commencement ceremony at every school. Our presence means so much to our administration, our faculty, and, most importantly, our students, including their family and guests. I will be sending out an email communication to all of you within the next couple of days outlining all of these events, so they're there for you, and you don't have to furiously scribble on all these dates that I've just given you. Any questions about any of those dates that I discussed? Great. I want to close with a brief update on how we are progressing with our Board of Trustees' goals for the year, and we'll see if I can work this. Wow. So our trustee membership goals. I've already discussed Goals 1 and 2 in conjunction with Rutgers Giving Day. David Harris, the Chair of our Committee on Trustee Philanthropy, will have more to say on these goals during the report. Goal 3, I do want to spend a little time on. I want to thank Pete McDonough, the Senior Vice President of External Affairs, for all of his hard work in helping us to work on this goal. Pete's office prepared a one-page Rutgers in New Jersey in your district for each of the 40 New Jersey legislative districts. The page describes Rutgers' footprint across New Jersey and in each New Jersey legislative district. On February 1, a congratulation on your election or reelection letter was sent out through Pete's office on behalf of trustees, in which we do have a trustee residing in a district, that included the appropriate Rutgers in New Jersey in your district fact sheet. On February 13, Mike Duhaime, the Chair of the Task Force on Legislative Engagement, Amy Mansu, Vice Chair and Member of the Task Force on Legislative Engagement, and I sent out a letter to each legislator in the 15 districts in which we do not have a trustee residing, that included this one-page sheet for their respective districts, all through the works of Pete's office, and we've gotten some positive feedback back from these legislators about receiving this communication. An email informing you of who your New Jersey representatives are and providing you with a sample email to use to request a visit was sent to all of us by email on February 22. You may use the sample email or use your own method to request a visit. I know that some of you have started attempting to set up meetings with your legislators, and I would encourage you to continue to do so to help us meet this goal. Vice Chairman Sue, when she gives the Task Force and Legislative Engagement Report, will have a little bit more to say about this goal. So this goal is right now in progress. Goal number, goal number four, which is no longer on our screen. So Goal Number Four is each trustee should attend six university events or activities in addition to board meetings, committee meetings, and university commencement. As you have heard with events that I've outlined, there are many opportunities now, well, here we go, we're back, many opportunities over the next few months to help meet this goal. I will continue to inform you of events by my email communications to you in the hope that this information will allow you to fit some of these events into your schedule. As I reported to you at our December meeting, at that time, the Board of Trustees contributed over 500 hours as part of the life of our university. I will provide a more detailed description of this goal at our meeting in June. At this point, we are well on track to meet this goal. Any questions about the individual goals? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to continue on with the trustee leadership goals. I guess one of the goals should have been for me to use this clicker properly.
He's going to get a backup. He's going to get a backup. He's going to get a backup. Stop clicking.
All right. Okay, so I'll read them. Oh, well, maybe I won't. Okay, so we've completed that goal. So Goal One, I've already talked a little bit about. Goals 1, 2, and 3 in conjunction with Rutgers Giving Day, Dave will have a little bit more to say about this in his report. Goal Four is on track to be accomplished. We will hear from Chancellor Cantor later in this meeting, and we'll hear from Chancellor Strom at our meeting in June. Goal Five has been met today with our second educational site visit, having been conducted at the Institute for Jazz Studies earlier today. Goal Six is set to be complete on April 10 with our Second Annual Board of Trustees Retreat. Goal Seven is in progress, as Squire Sir Vance, who is continuing his outstanding work in leading the effort to orient our new trustees, had his latest event on January 25. Goal Eight has already been completed. Goal Nine is currently in progress. I have sent three email updates to all of you since our last meeting, and I plan to continue to do so monthly for the rest of the year. I've had three meet and greets with the chair since our last meeting, and I plan on hosting two more the rest of the academic year. I do want to close by saying thank you to all of you for all the good that you do for our great university. Any questions about our goals? All right. Seeing none, I'd like now to turn it over to President Holloway for his remarks.
Thank you, Chair Prosta. I have been on the road since the start of February. Kimberly Hopeley, head of the Foundation, has sent me to Florida, Seattle, Florida, London, Paris, Dubai, DC, and Charleston. Where are you, Kimberly? Thank you. I'm tired. But in late February was easily the highlight where I, along with an important Rutgers contingent, spent a week meeting with Rutgers alumni who are living abroad in London and Paris and Dubai. This is part of a larger project of planting our flag proudly wherever we have Rutgers alumni. This is an inspiring trip, highlighted by seeing London Tower Bridge lit up scarlet on the night of our event. I've been told not to ask too many questions at how Kimberly's team pulled it off, but it was pretty wonderful all the same. That event, the London outreach is in its second year of my engagement, and we actually had to turn well over 100 people, I think, away from the event just of capacity issues. Close to 200 were there. Paris, also, we had a waiting list of people who wanted to attend. Not that we want to push people away, but we do want to get people excited about the way in which Rutgers is re-engaging them, so this is really quite wonderful. Just before spring break, I had the chance to be in Newark to meet with university senators representing faculty, staff, and students. This is part of an ongoing series of meetings that I began in the fall with small groups of university senators from across the institution. The themes of the meetings have been remarkably consistent, consistent, an interest in supporting Rutgers, developing new ways of working across campuses, and a genuine appreciation for the chance to offer perspectives. I also, that same day, spoke, and, oh, this was delayed because of a snowstorm, so this is a rescheduled meeting, spoke and took questions at a student town hall at Express Newark. It was a really great event. This is for undergraduates, well organized, very well managed by Newark Student Government, lots of important questions, tough ones but fair ones, and very well attended, so I was very happy to do that. Repeatedly and in other forums, our students pose informed and genuine questions about such topics like affordability, how fees and tuition are set, about our infrastructure plans, about our efforts towards sustainability and carbon neutrality, and about making the university easier to navigate academically and socially, I will add. I want to thank those other members of central administration who were there for part of that town hall to answer questions with specificity that I did not have. I think more than anything else, it was a demonstration of curiosity, and curiosity met with honest and straightforward answers. Very much appreciated. Since we last spoke, I also had my, gave my Third Annual Budget Address about, just a month ago now, at the University Senate Meeting, after highlighting our pride points such as our rise in U.S. News rankings across all of our undergraduate universities, campuses, pride points with record research funding, pride points of reaching our $50 million goal for Scholar Promise fundraising a year early, really blowing past that, and pride in our latest Churchill Scholar. I discussed, aside from those things, after highlighting those things, I discussed our pivot from reducing the structural deficit to developing a long-term plan for financial sustainability focused on generating new revenue. Although our sources, resources are limited as we reduce the deficit, I mentioned some investments we are making, including the Faculty Diversity Hiring Initiative, that has brought 76 new faculty so far to Rutgers, an academic excellence initiative called Roadmaps led by Executive Vice President Prabhas Mogi, upgrades in more than 100 buildings through funding from PSE&amp;G, extension of the graduate, presidential graduate fellowships for another five years, tools to help students navigate student services, and a budget increase for the libraries for collections. I mention this to point out that although funds are limited, we are not cutting deeply into the bones of the academic enterprise. We must preserve it and continue investing, as we will. I also told the Senate on that occasion how much I had appreciated the small group meetings, which were all done in person, that I referenced at the beginning of my comments and will continue to do next fall. We are in the height of admissions season, as you all know, and this is our first year of using the Common App. We had a significant, that's not even a good word, a breathtaking increase in applications across Rutgers. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but Camden was in the ballpark of 230% increase in applications. Newark was around 150% increase in applications, and New Brunswick was around 60% increase in applications. As part, which is, which, when you open up to the Common App for the first time, you do grow, but these are, numbers are off the charts. Behind the scenes, we also improved our approach to admissions university-wide to better coordinate admissions across the three undergraduate campuses, and that was a tremendous step in a positive direction. Now, with that sunny sky comes a gray cloud, not of our own making, but one we have to deal with. As you probably know, there have been well-documented problems with the federal rollout of the new FAFSA, or Free Application for Federal Student Aid. Project three is in the making that has been fumbled pretty badly right at the finish line here. The Department of Education continues to struggle in giving schools access to viable test records. At this point, we, along with almost every school in the country, are running weeks behind our typical financial aid packaging timelines. We're communicating to admitted students that we are committed to giving them the information they need to make the best college decisions for themselves, but our hands are tied by the information we get from the federal government. In the interest of making sure incoming students have enough time to receive and evaluate their financial aid packages, we have extended the commitment deadline from May 1 to June 1, which many institutions across the country are doing. I could offer presidential pros that, that papers over this. This is not good. In fact, it's quite the opposite. The only benefit is that it is not unique to Rutgers' particular challenge, but it is a serious disappointment in terms of what was promised to us by the Department of Education. I want to publicly acknowledge the frontline staff in admissions and financial aid, especially in light of this, who are working so hard to help our admitted students and all our returning students. And while no, while no doubt the road ahead for this admissions cycle for all of higher education or required continued, continued attention, the news changes almost on a daily basis, Rutgers does look forward to welcoming a phenomenal incoming class in the fall. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, President Holloway. Any questions for President Holloway? Linda?
Microphone.
Mike?
Thank you. With regard to the increased applications, were those students who are, I've forgotten the exact word, but they're delayed in terms of receiving their, if they're able to come to school or not? What is it called?
Financial aid.
No, 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 no. Yeah, admissions. Their decisions.
Acceptance.
Their acceptance, right. There's a ton of students who have been sort of put on this second layer of, of like a waiting list. If we've pushed back the date to June 1, when do those students have the opportunity now to make the decision to come to Rutgers or not?
For those on the waitlist, you're saying?
Yeah, like the waitlist. There's a word for it. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Everything is delayed.
Yeah.
Everything, and it's everywhere. The only schools that are, the only individuals who are free of this are those people of means who wouldn't, aren't expecting to rely on financial aid at all. That's a very small subset nationwide. And then those schools who have significant resources that they can run a fairly, well, some measure of risk, I mean, it depends on the institution, are making commitments now to their students. And this is not just for new students, this is also returning students.
Right. The word I was looking for is waitlisted.
I'm sorry?
Waitlisted.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting there. I'm just, I'm walking through all the different.
It just popped in my head, I had to get it out.
So it's, so there are wealthy families for whom this, this, they're, they're in a different conversation. They can just accept the offers wherever, you know, whatever, wherever they're going, so not going to get financial aid. There are the returning students and incoming students who are going to be suffering these delays. They don't have to commit until June 1, broadly speaking. And what I, we were, I had a check in with the chancellor just yesterday, our admit rate, admit coming rate, people who have been admitted and have said yes, is depressed right now because everybody's waiting for, well, what's the package going to be? And that's going to be a nationwide phenomenon. What, and so that just, that creates a ripple effect downstream in terms of waitlists, notification, and in terms of the, any kind of financial aid packaging. So it's, it's not good as far as that's concerned. One of the other challenges related to the waitlist is because the, one of the, I'll put it in an affirmative way, I referenced that Rutgers admissions teams on our undergraduate campuses are working together in new ways this year, so that the simplest way to put it is that the first response you get from Rutgers is you've been admitted to Rutgers, instead of you did not get admitted here, and then a week or two later, you get admitted someplace else in Rutgers. So you already have a bad taste in your mouth. So with the first, if you're going to be admitted, you're going to get, you're going to get that first. So that, we hope, is going to make a difference in terms of wherever you've been admitted and wherever you want to go. But because there are way more students for all of our campuses who are eligible, who could cross the bar, the waitlist is going to be a much more complicated space. And then practices where, where people who might have applied just to New Brunswick but expressed interest in Camden, Newark, how they exist on the waitlist if they're not admitted into New Brunswick, and the timing of it is also, everything is jammed up. I wish I could be, there's probably more technical ways of explaining it, but we'll just go with jammed up. That gets the point across. But, but we were talking with Mike Gower yesterday, the chancellors and I, one of the chancellors said, well, what's the drop dead date? Like, at what point do we have to start working our own archival information about returning students so we can make best guesses in terms of how we package their aid? For med, I've only been talking undergrads, for medical students, medical school students, they start, they, they start in April, so we're actually having for a much smaller group granted packaging, financial aid for them much earlier, but it's, it's not a shot in the dark, but we're guessing in many ways, and we'll have to work out some arrangement for them. It's very messy.
I have two questions by Zoom. Walt, then Brielle, and I think, like, Roberta, I saw your hand, so let's go with that. Walt, Brielle, Roberta.
Linda.
Also mute.
You're on mute. Yeah, I'm mute.
Thank you. President Holloway, I read on March 15 that the Department of Education had only processed a little over 5 million FAFSA's, and the anticipated amount is 17 million, so they still have quite a ways to go. Has the university received any ICERS from the Department of Ed? And, and what about, how is the, our fellow Big Ten institutions doing? Are they getting the ICERS from the Department of Ed?
I'm going to turn that over to Mike Gower, because he's the running point on this very issue.
So as of yesterday, we had received six real records. We had had 100 test records last week, but six real records, and each of them was incorrect, meaning data that came from the Department of Education was incorrect, and that is the common experience across other institutions like us. So we've been in contact, direct contact with the Department of Education on those, as have the other institutions, but it's just a bloody mess.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not going to get any better. It's going to be a while before they're going to, they haven't processed a third, third of the applications yet. All right, thank you, Mike. Thank you, President Holloway.
Thank you. Brielle?
Hi, President Holloway. Apologies for my lack of in-person attendance. I'm currently recovering from some unknown illness. But my question was, how does this delay affect current students who receive financial aid through the federal government, as well as how does this affect Rutgers' ability to assess campus grants like the Scarlet Promise, the Scarlet Guarantee? Because I know that has been a big concern.
Those are excellent questions, and I'll turn to Mike again.
Yes, good afternoon. This affects all students, incoming and continuing. We have 58,000 records that we're expecting. We have 58,000 students approximately that, that get some form of financial aid and fill out the, the forms. So it is, it is impactful for everybody, and it will be coming to us in bits and pieces. I just got an update that we, in fact, today received 6,000 records, but that's 6,000 out of 58,000, so, and no idea where, where they are located. Do they come to us alphabetically? Do they come to us year? We don't know until we process them, but assuming they're correct. So it is, that's a good start, but we have a long way to go on that.
And a follow-up question I have is, will the deadlines for the term bills be extended until students can receive the proper aid coming the fall semester?
Yes, although we don't expect to get into that kind of timeline unless it is a real disaster.
Thank you.
Roberta, and then Linda Caldwell up. Go ahead, Roberta.
Okay. What I have to say is more of a comment, but I think it could affect the decision process, that it seems like many elite or so-called elite schools are requiring SATs again. So therefore, it would seem to me that many of the students, they're taking them anyway, so they'll, of course, if they apply to Rutgers, send them on with their applications. So I guess a question I would have, I'm thinking that maybe that would affect such things as consideration for the Honors College or special programs. So I guess a question I would have, I'm thinking that maybe that would affect such things as consideration for the Honors College or special programs. So I'll turn that into a question.
I mean, I can imagine many different questions from that comment. What I will say right now is that when we move to SAT optional, the commitment then was to do it, I think, on a three-year, look, thinking about it, doing it for a three-year period. So we have enough information to judge whether we want to continue with being test optional, return back to using the test. I've not checked in, I mean, I've worked directly with Courtney Mackinoff on this specifically. So I don't, I don't know where he stands on it right now. But you'll notice that schools are returning. And the important thing to know about how they're returning the SAT is that in the way, it's, it's complicated, but in the wake of the Supreme Court's affirmative action, decision regarding affirmative action, SFFA, these schools have looked, have done a deep dive into their data about profiles of how people, how the SAT figures into, how they understand who the students are. And in fact, Cian Bylock, the president of Dartmouth, wrote a very compelling essay about this, that this, ironically, by returning to the SAT, interpreted in a proper way, which I'll get to in one second, is a vehicle to preserving the diversity that is harder to do in the wake of the Supreme Court decision. Now, the leap of faith is really important here in that the leap of faith means that an institution does want to make sure to preserve its diversity across, you know, all the different ways of articulating it. And Cian's point, amongst many, but the basic point is, if we look at SATs as only as the best number, that's who we're going to admit, then we are not going to, we will have failed in terms of trying to address diversity of experiences and backgrounds and educational resources, et cetera. But if we look at SATs in a holistic way, that a student from a school that only offers one AP series of courses instead of like 15, or a school, a student at a school that doesn't have a computer lab, or a student at a school, you know, fill in the blanks, and if they get, I'll make up the numbers, a 1,200 on the SAT, they might be a rock star, but in a very limited resource environment. So we want to, we, Cian was saying, Dartmouth wants to admit that student more than the perfect scoring student from the most elite school in the country. So that is a different way of using the SAT as, as, as an articulated strategy. And that's how these other schools have started to follow that, that rhetorical move. I just haven't talked to Courtney yet to understand his interpretation. So that, that'll be part of the conversation.
I think I'm next. And in a way, you've addressed my question indirectly. My concern is about the brain drain that I hear about often, that the best and brightest of New Jersey students, high school students, opt to go out of state. My question is sort of twofold. Are we doing anything in particular to address that issue? And how are we, how are we assessing the brightest and the boldest and the best students in the state without the standardized tests and other markers that they had once upon a time?
That's a, it's a great question. I'm going to offer a higher gloss on it because you needed admissions officer to go and really, like, these are the specific things that we're doing. But certainly there is the largest, the large concern about New Jersey being an exit state for high school students for complicated sets of reasons, not just because, I mean, anything getting away from mom and dad, getting away from our high school classmates, which are real things, I don't say that lightly, but also a great financial aid package from another school. I mean, I can't remember the schools, a northern SUNY school that was offering advertising in New Jersey about, we will, I might not say this exactly properly, but we'll charge you New Jersey in-state tuition as an out-of-state student. And there should have been a big asterisk next to it because they weren't actually being fully accurate of what they were doing, but that's another conversation. But trying to be more competitive in the financial aid space, something that we now have across the board with all of our campuses, and Camden and Newark, of course, doing it first, now New Brunswick as well, run to the top here. That has certainly helped as recruiting mechanism for talented students who are coming from modest resources. What I can say is that we need to continue to do sort of a all-hands-on-deck effort to make sure that we break the narrative about Rutgers being the safety school, regardless of which, whatever campus you're going to, because that's part of the challenge as well. The Honors College in New Brunswick specifically has the latest articulation of that in terms of the physical space is one method of doing it, but it's an expensive method of doing that sort of thing. What we're seeing now, what I hope that we're going to see frankly, partly with the rankings rise, that that will create greater interest. Frankly, the Common App, Surge and Applications will make it harder to get admitted to Rutgers. Now, this is counterintuitive, it sounds at first, but it makes Rutgers more enticing because it's harder to get in. And that, for a certain, for a certain population. The, our commitment though, to all the metrics that were important before in terms of diverse student body, significantly, majority of whom are coming from the state of New Jersey, geographically dispersed. Also thinking that we're in Newark with a very specific attention in terms of local communities. All of those ideals, goals, those aren't changed, but we have to find ways to make sure we're, we're realizing them as much as we can. That's the high-level answer that I can provide for you. The last thing I'll say is that we do want to have out-of-state students coming in. That's part, for all kinds of reasons, one of which is financial, certainly. And so just as people are exiting the state, I, when I was talking with, doing my budget rounds, I was talking to Speaker Kaufman, like, but we're also bringing new taxpayers into the state. You know, bringing students in and getting them to stay as part of the ambition. So there's that piece of it also.
Gary?
Thank you, President Holloway. And on that same topic, on the Common App, congrats on the great increases. So demand has gone up significantly, selectivity to your comments. It seems like that's going up as well. Is there any takeaways on the supply side of, you know, what we offer? Or does that admittance really just mean just more people getting denied here? Or are there any opportunities for, you know, allowing more students to, to be here?
There's a, that's, that's a, there's multi, many layers to that question, right? So it's too, it's, it's going to be too early to be definitive about what the move to the Common App has done aside from just crude numbers coming in. I mean, I, I'm sure the admissions officers are developing profiles of, okay, who is in the pool? What does it look like? I don't have that information yet. That's, that's too early. But that will be a multi-year analysis to understand that. What's happening at the same time, and because of the Common App, our selectivity will go up, which, I mean, the rankings game is a rankings game, right? It's deeply flawed. We all know that. But the fact is because our selectivity will go up across every one of our campuses, that'll factor into our rankings as well. So it will have a flywheel effect. That's not the reason we did it. We did it because it was hard to apply to Rutgers before. It made no sense. But so that, those data, we have, but it's premature to offer an analysis of them. Not hiding from it. It's just, this is just brand new information. As we go forward though, I mentioned in my, my comments, financial sustainability as one of the shifts in ways in which we're thinking about how we're going to proceed. And like interwoven in this, or one element, one, one aspect of financial sustainability is about demand for Rutgers. And especially the mix that we have of in-state, out-of-state, international students. And so that is actually, since tuition is our largest revenue source at the university, that, there's real consequences there. Could be positive consequences. Other schools, in fact, I'm, other major state institutions, I'm chairing the review of one of those schools right now, a peer competitor is still wrestling with the dip in their enrollment. That has persisted since COVID. It softened a bit. But so we are in a really great place compared to so many of our peers. I'm thrilled about that. The, the last piece I wanted to say, oh dear, I forgot the last piece. Oh, that one of the, the threads that's interwoven in all this is that we have not done as an institution, a successful job in telling our story. Whether it's just from flat-out marketing, things like, you know, the big block art at the airport that people do talk about and, you know, post about. Whether it is about how we market in trade magazines, like the Chronicle of Higher, Chronicle of Higher Education, how we tell the story of faculty's accomplishments on all of our campuses. We, we've always done it, but not at the level, the decibel level that we're doing now. And all of these things are, it's important to tell our story in constructive ways that makes people understand the great work that's been happening at Rutgers all along. So all of these things are woven together that will have a cumulative effect in terms of Rutgers being more selective, more in, in a university of desire with in-state and without, in-state and out-of-state as well. And those all will actually have a real effect on our bottom line. There's no doubt about it. Oh, one last piece I wanted to talk about, financial sustainability, is the chancellors, as we launch into the study, have talked about the ways in which not just you apply to Rutgers, but how you can come back to Rutgers as a continuing, completion degree, something I know that Nancy's worked specifically on in Newark. But that we are also looking at different revenue opportunities, whether it's for lifelong learning, the online learning space, and, and frankly, ways to facilitate students' quick process towards a degree, because the sooner we can get people through, the more we can let in and the, and the flow will keep moving smoothly in that regard.
Got it. And just a follow, so the constraint on the supply side is really, is around housing and faculty and just putting more students in a classroom. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Bob Iker?
Thank you, Mr. Krasner. President Holloway, just going back to the FAFSA for a second. How are we messaging the students with regard to this? Because it's better to control the discussion than having them get information from all sorts of platforms and stuff. You know, it'd be, if we're proactive, because, you know, Rutgers, they, they attribute a lot more to Rutgers than we actually deserve on the, in that regard. And I'd just rather, you know, that we control some of the messages out to both the students and the families, because they're going to have to make a decision in a short time period. You know, are we past our usual APA days for incoming students, incoming accepted students? You know, how, how does it all work? And how do we, how are we in contact with students?
We've been in contact in an ongoing way in that regard. It's a very politic way of putting that Rutgers has given credit for more things than it actually deserves in this way. It's very presidential of you. But, 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 but it's true. But we have been messaging students and their parents all along the way. In fact, early, late last week, earlier this week, there were conversations about at what point would it be helpful for message from my office to come out? So we're just trying to, we're, we are very aware of all of these tensions and issues and trying to be as proactive as possible as we go forward. You know, on that point, something I forgot to mention as part of Rutgers telling its story more effectively, I've invited, this is mostly New Brunswick, that's where I'm based all the time, Courtney Mackinoff, to use me and my office to reach out to high school guidance counselors during recruitment days and things, and open house days. So I'm, you know, working the grounds, literally on, you know, near my house where I work, where we're having welcome meetings for high school counselors who are really operating under a very old set of ideas about what Rutgers, what Rutgers is. So we're trying to change the narrative in that way, too.
Any other question for President Holloway? Okay. Thank you, President Holloway.
Thank you.
I'd like to call on Chancellor Cantor to give a report to the board, please. Chancellor Cantor?
Don't know my own technology. Well, welcome, everybody. We're thrilled to have you here in Newark. So I wanted today really zero in on what it means for Rutgers Newark to be a trusted anchor institution in and of the city of Newark and the ways in which that contributes not only to community well-being, but to the excellence of this university, of this institution, and really the way in which that place-based work resonates nationally and globally. So you'll see up here a montage, and it's in your materials, of examples of the way in which our faculty, students and staff are really becoming deeply embedded and trusted partners in the city of Newark and of the city of Newark. Whether it's in the, we've just been talking about FAFSA. Well, we're deeply involved in the FAFSA challenge between Newark and Camden, the cities of Newark and Camden. And, you know, I won't be too biased here, but we're going to win. So that has to do with, with our high school students filling out FAFSA's. We were very involved with the Newark Public Schools in getting that legislation passed in the state. And obviously, the FAFSA challenge is held up right now by the FAFSA, but that is a very good example of where it will benefit this university, as well as benefiting what happens in the city and the social mobility pipeline. You can think about our Center for Politics and Race in America that's just been named at, wonderfully named after Sheila Oliver. A perfect example of the way in which we're looking at training the next generation of people involved in leadership and politics, both from this arena, from our students and the city, but also thinking statewide, nationally and globally. There are lots of examples here, and I'm going to do a bit of a deep dive on what it means to be an anchor institution in line with your educational project. Is that what we call it? So the main theme I want to really emphasize here is something that's often forgotten when people think about universities becoming agents of change in their community. And that is the reciprocity theme. We forget that we get better when the city gets better. We get better when we create the social mobility that brings a very diverse population to our table. When, when our faculty can do what, for example, David Trout, our wonderful lawyer in the corner up there, talking about no gentrification. So he has produced in his Center on Law and Equality and Metropolitan Equity, extraordinary data on what it would mean for Newark to have the billions of dollars of capital investment in this city that's happening now without gentrifying. The mayor and I always joke that we're not going to be the next Brooklyn. Well, what does that mean? How do you do that? That's not so simple. So the point being here, that it benefits the scholarship in this institution. It benefits the social mobility we create for our students. It benefits the community well-being, all in one package. And that's what I want to talk about today. So we, many of you, some of you may remember, we did a very intensive, very democratic, extensive strategic plan in 2014, lots of charrettes and town hall meetings and groups in the city and with alums. And we did it around two questions. What does the public need from us? And what's our identity? How do those things merge? How do we be, in this, in my language now, a trusted anchor institution and still get better ourselves? How do we put those two together? Well, the thing that's wonderful about Rutgers, well, there are many things wonderful about Rutgers Newark, but one of the things that I love the best is that we have a very long tradition that we could build on after that 2014 strategic plan of being a place where opportunity meets excellence, being a place committed to social justice. David Harris will remember the, the, well, the 1968, 69 Conklin takeover and then the minority student program in the law school and how it was created. We go way back with this. But what's wonderful is that we can fast forward into a movement that's happening nationally with many universities and many other kinds of anchor institutions. But what was really, came out of that strategic plan is the notion that our identity as an institution and what the public in Newark and beyond needed from us, these were not separate things. But they really intersected in a very smooth and easy way. Whether it's, for example, and, and I know you toured IJS today, but it would be wonderful if some of you also go see the Blues People exhibit in Express Newark. but it would be wonderful if some of you also go see the Blues People exhibit in Express Newark. It's so easy for us to go back and think about what it means to celebrate Amiri Baraka's Blues People. Because that's who the city is and that's who we are as an institution. It's where our history has been. Whether it means how we take the pantry, the food pantry and combine it with community gardens that are happening everywhere in Newark. Whether we think about, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, how our geoscientists can help in that process because there are a lot of toxins in those community gardens. That helps the science and it helps the soil and it will help the food. President Holloway talked about our wonderful Student Government Association that did the town hall, um, with President Holloway. There's a picture of the three leaders there and down there and they are phenomenal. What it means to have, for example, a really empowered Student Government Association that's as diverse as the city of Newark and as diverse as New Jersey and the world. And to have a student affairs staff that is completely dedicated to empowering those students. So the notion here is that our engagement in and of the city of Newark is not something to the side. It's not service to the side of who we are as an institution. One of my favorite programs is the Lives in Translation. So our students speak 50-plus home languages and that's actually an underestimate of the degree of linguistic fluidity, if you will, and diversity. When COVID struck, the mayor called and said, can you have your students do translation for contact tracing during COVID? Because your students are trained in the Lives in Translation program to go out and use their lived experience to really intersect with what's out there in the community. And of course, they did that. They also work in the Immigration Law Clinic doing translation. So the point is that we are empowering the knowledge that our students, faculty and staff have, but doing it in a way that is embedded in the pressing issues of our community. So I want to step back from that, um, to give just a very, and I promise I'll be brief, a very brief tutorial on what it means to be an anchor institution. This is a movement that has grown tremendously. In 2009, Sean Donovan, when he was Obama's Secretary of HUD, called a group together led by Ira Harkavy at the University of Pennsylvania. And we had a working group that was, I don't know, maybe 20 people from different institutions. Eds and meds mostly at the time, though that anchor movement has increased. And basically saying, how can you leverage the intellectual, social, political, economic capital of a university to really make a difference in its community? That anchor institution movement, the AITF, as we call it, the Anchor Institution Task Force that came out of that working group. And you see retooling HUD there is the, is the white paper that came out, has now grown to over a thousand members nationally and globally. And we have a collaboration with the Council of Europe. And they produce conferences and books all the time now on the local global residents, on what it means to dig deep in place-based work and have that resonate globally and nationally. What is particularly wonderful about the way the anchor institution movement is unveiled, if you will, in, in a place like Newark, is that the other kinds of anchors have come to the table. So I'm looking at my friend Rob Falzone over there. Prudential is one of the major anchors in and of the city of Newark over 150 years, right? And Prudential, Sean A. Harris from Prudential and I co-chair what's called the Newark Anchor Collaborative now. That includes NJ PAC, the Newark Museum, Symphony Hall, Prudential and Audible and United and McKinsey is coming in and PSENG and a variety of major anchors in this area. We all get together and create a commitment to racial equity and to economic growth, equitable economic growth in and of the city of Newark. So the movement has really expanded. One of the most interesting things that has happened to the anchor institution movement is that it has really been a way to focus anchors on what it means to think about systemic racial equity. What it means to think about opportunity from that perspective in a very broad way. That's perfect for a city like Newark and it's perfect for an institution like Rutgers Newark. So let me go through some of the ways in which we've done anchor work here. And I'll just go through this very quickly. On the side, I'd be glad to unpack any one of these things. We have a number of different areas. First of all, let's think in our, in our home area, if you will, of educational pathways and educational opportunities. This means everything from creating dual enrollment, um, programs with our local schools. That is, they, high school students come and take courses here. We actually now have some dual enrollment in the Newark, in two of the Newark Public Schools where our faculty are in the schools doing court, and students get college credit. It's one of the most successful nationally ways to really promote students from an, from a city like Newark on their way towards college. And we know towards the return on investment of college. We have a phenomenal urban education program department that is doing all kinds of things like bilingual education, teacher training, incredible disability studies in terms of this teacher training. You all know about run-to-the-top scholarship programs. The Newark City of Learning Collaborative has all of the institutions in the area who, who feed or, or for whom Newark students are fed. Montclair State and, and all the county colleges and us and Essex, et cetera, NJIT. All sitting around the table trying to increase the college-going rate in the city of Newark. FAFSA, we've all talked about. But what I always want to point out here is that this is real, on-the-ground scholarship. So our Cornwall Center for Research does extraordinary test, really cutting-edge testing of what it means to do things like have students fill out FAFSA. Does that actually increase the likelihood that they will go to college? Because they have a sense that they can get federal financial aid or state, New Jersey state financial aid. Cornwall's doing a, a testing project in the high, in two of the high schools in Newark to look at what it means to get freshmen on track to go to college. These are just examples of some of the publicly engaged scholarship that comes. And then, of course, we have our Honors Living Learning Community, which is an extraordinary, um, community, uh, you saw on the first slide, the, the New York Times headline on it. And what happens in HLHC is that 50% of the students we aim to have come from Newark. So it feeds directly this pipeline. And these are extraordinary students who are going on to do amazing things. So in the, the next thing that of course intersects with educational opportunity is how do you build a strong, safe, healthy neighborhoods? How, I already talked about David Trout's work on housing. If you don't have affordable housing, safe and affordable housing, you won't have health, you won't have schooling, you won't have environmental justice. You won't have any of the things that make for a safe, healthy, vibrant neighborhood. Housing is a critical piece of it. But housing's not the only thing, obviously. Take public safety. We're incredibly proud of the, being the backbone for the Newark Public Safety Collaborative, which takes the, um, scholarship and research of our criminal justice faculty. They do what they call risk terrain modeling, which is to focus not on who's doing the crime, but on where the crime is occurring and what are the characteristics of the places? Are they ATMs that aren't lit? Are they, are there safe pathways walking to school? Are they vacant lots? And then feeds those data around a roundtable of about 40 community partners and law enforcement. And I really emphasize that this has totally changed the relationship between community partners, us and law enforcement all around the table. And then they come up with interventions. So just as one, one of my favorite examples, there were a lot of car thefts. And there are a lot of car thefts all around the country now. That's on the rise. Well, they did an analysis in Newark and it turns out that people were leaving their cars idling in front of bodegas, in front of grocery stores, whatever. And the cops were giving the tickets to the people who left their cars and had them stolen because they left their cars. So the victim was getting the ticket, right? So they did the risk terrain analysis, figured out that this is what was leading to an ease, to making it easy to steal cars. They did a citywide campaign and the Newark Public School students did most of the posters for it. And they did the campaign around environmental pollution. So it wasn't a blame campaign. It was, don't leave your car idling because the pollution from leaving your car idling is bad for the community. It has totally remade. Now, people are still losing cars, but it, the car thefts have gone down tremendously. It's just, it may seem like a small thing, but the way, the degree to which as a trusted anchor, we can feed data that is cutting-edge modeling to community partners who then can collaborate with the police. And the police can now go off and work on things other than giving tickets to people who left their cars and had them stolen. Just one example. Then I mentioned earlier, I think, the community soil projects. The Newark Geoscience Ecosystem, for example, is turning out to be incredibly important for thinking about what a safe, healthy neighborhood is. There are a lot of toxic, toxically polluted soils in Newark. Not surprisingly, as a post-industrial city, right? So the NSF has just funded to the tune of $4.3 million, one of our fabulous geoscientists, Ashanti Roof, to go out and create a whole ecosystem with community gardeners, with our geoscientists, with our future geoscientists, namely her graduate students. An ecosystem to really think about what safe and healthy environments look like in an urban setting. For example, we don't have many trees. We need more trees. What does it look like to do this? And working with City Hall, they can get a whole lot done with the Office of Environmental Sustainability in the Newark City Hall. So these are just some examples and there are many more of them up there. One I always want to point to is the New Jersey Scholarship and Transformation, Transformative Education in Prison Program, NJSTEP. We are the backbone for that, but that's all across Rutgers and then many other institutions in New Jersey. It's in all of the maximum security prisons, doing prison education. And then we do a justice studies reentry program here on campus in criminal just, in our Criminal Justice School of Criminal Justice. It's a perfect example of taking on a community issue. Newark has huge numbers of formerly incarcerated individuals and making it into a positive educational pipeline that really adds to the strength of our institution and the strength of the city. Equally economic development, I've talked about a lot already, but you cannot emphasize enough how important it is to commit to investing in local hiring, local buying and local living for Newark. And so we have, for example, a phenomenal Center for Local Supply Chain Resiliency in the Business School. Kevin Lyons is my hero. He is producing, literally mapping all of the local businesses, often minority-owned businesses in Newark, mapping those onto all the procurement needs of everything from an audible and a Prudential to a Rutgers Newark and a Rutgers biomedical health system, et cetera, et cetera. All the people sitting around our Newark Anchor Collaborative. And we are trying to increase the degree to which we then become the matchmaker for increasing investment in local entrepreneurs. Are You Flourishing, which is up there, is an entrepreneurship program run by Ted Baker in the, in the Business School, um, for formerly incarcerated individuals who have re-entered, who become entrepreneurs. He is producing cohorts of amazing entrepreneurs. Not only is his own scholarship on entrepreneurship in, really informed by this, but we are creating another generation of new entrepreneurs who would never have had that opportunity before. Amber Randolph, who is sitting right here, has brought from the Department of Commerce a substantial grant to have digital equity, to do digital equity partnerships in the city of Newark. Not surprising, the city of Newark is behind a digital divide. We need to get over that, right? So the Department of Commerce is investing millions of dollars to have us work with Invest Newark and with the Newark Alliance and City Hall to spread broadband, to do tech training jobs from local entrepreneurs who are doing the tech training. Again, it's, it's the kind of, I just can't emphasize enough how much better that makes us. We're, we are, have our all-time high research funding, external research funding this year. Um, $52 million, which for Rutgers Newark, that's a 10-year all-time high. A lot of it is because the federal government, for example, and business partners see this as a real profitable investment to create the kinds of scholarship and the kinds of partnerships that we are doing here. And the best I will leave for last, and that is socially engaged art and civic voice. There is nothing more important, I would argue, for universities to do today as anchor institutions than to be the progenitors of civic voice by collaborating around socially engaged art. That is where democracy gets over the divide. That is where the horrendous lack of trust in the academy that is out there. All the polls show universities are, are down, maybe not as low as the Supreme Court, but we're getting down there, right? One way to get over that is to do the kinds of socially engaged art that really empowers not only faculty, students and staff, but the resonance and the resilience and the legacy and the voice and the history of the place in which you are. So, for example, we teamed up with Mellon, through Mellon Foundation funding, with New Jersey Performing Arts Center to do a jazz poetry city versus project all around, in all the public libraries, all around the city of Newark. Because jazz poetry is Newark. It's the history of Newark, as Linda knows. So it's that kind of thing. Our Bold Project, which is funded by the Helen Gurley Brown Foundation, our stu, our Young Women Bold Leaders. I want you to go down Broad Street and you will see an incredible mural. I think there's a picture of it actually on the first slide I showed. I R students and artists really uplifting what it means to think about what does bold women leadership look like? That next generation that we are creating right here in Newark is not turning its back on the legacy of Newark, on the vibrancy of Newark, on the rich history. But it's taking that history forward and thinking about what the next generation will look like when it does that. The newest American Story Bus, we literally have this bus outfitted to go all around the city of Newark and get the stories of the newest Americans. And a digital platform that I urge you all to go on, that's absolutely spectacular with those stories. If you want to talk about brain drain, if we want to get around brain drain, the way you get around it is that you empower the voices and the lived experiences right on the ground. And then people want to stay. And then people want to stay. They want to stay because they are empowered to make change and go forward. Dodge Poetry Festival, which is at NJPAC every two years, is engaging with our MFA incredible poets and graduate student poets to really think about what does poetry mean for the people, with the people and of the people of Newark? Just some examples. And you saw the Institute of Jazz Studies. So finally, my final point here is that what I tried to illustrate, I hope well and quickly, is what I call the positive recursive cycle that happens when publicly engaged scholarship meets the lived diverse experiences on the ground of faculty, staff and students, collaborates with community partners to move the needle on equity and justice. And in the end, what that does is create public trust that wasn't there before. I can tell you, this institution has been working for many generations to have public trust. The one thing I think we should be most proud of right now, and I think Rob would agree with me on this, is that there is more public trust right now in Newark, not just for the university, but for all the anchors that are staying here, that are committed here, that are moving the dial here and still getting better on their own. Moving the needle really works in anchor institution work. And for me, the bottom line, my hero in social psychology, and you'll pardon me going back to my field, is Kurt Lewin, who is the progenitor of what we call action research. And what Lewin always said, and I quote, was the best way to understand something is to try to change it. Isn't that our job? To understand something. If we want to understand something, we want our students to understand something, we need to try to change it. That's how we'll understand it. When I worked with the National Science Foundation on the Committee on Equal Opportunity in Science and Engineering, the best example I ever had of this was we had all these great scientists coming in, talking to us, and they were doing the New Arctic, the effect of climate change on the Arctic. And they hadn't interviewed a single indigenous member of the community that the Arctic was affecting, right? All that intergenerational knowledge was just sitting there. They came back the next CS meeting and they said, woo, you're right. We actually had to change our model. It's not, it's not rocket science. It's not even everyday science. It's humanity to think about the knowledge that is out there on the ground, ready to be used and mobilized if you are a trusted anchor partner. And my final comment then comes from my friend, Harry Boyt, political scientist and citizen scientist, who said that we had, it was about time that academia moved from the cult of the expert. And my colleague Peter Englott and I always write about this as moving from the cult of the expert to a community of experts with and without pedigree. That's what I think Rutgers Newark is doing. Thank you.
Any questions for Chancellor Cantor? David?
Nancy, thank you very much for that presentation and all that you have done since you've been here. I had a couple of questions and one is, have you begun to measure the impact on retention and graduation rates now that Rutgers Newark is established as an anchor institution? And I'll give you both at the same time. So the other thing is that on homelessness, have, have we done any work with respect to not just homelessness, but I know from personal experience, a lot of the people who are without housing refuse to go to shelters, actually refuse apartments. And, and I was wondering if we've done any work in that area, particularly that aspect of homelessness?
Yeah, thank you for both those questions, David. So on the first one, we absolutely are looking at retention and graduation rates. And I'll say that the pandemic did not help us with this. We were doing really well in moving that up. We had almost, we, we are always ahead on if the, if you do the national assessment that Washington Monthly does, which is they take the predicted graduation rate and the actual graduation rate. We're always ahead of that. We were moving way up that and then the pandemic hit. And not surprisingly, a lot of our students were really, just really disproportionately affected by the pandemic in terms of family losses, in terms of having to go, stop out. The president mentioned our re-enrollment effort. As a result of that, we turned to doing, with OSHI support, doing some really substantial work on re-enrollment. We've now re-enrolled, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but about, over 1,400 students since we started this program who have 60 credits or more, but no degree. And so that, that's our population that we're really looking at. We think if we can get, really get over that hump, then we'll see the full effect of the graduation rates and retention rates. I do want to say that I think, and it won't surprise you, that that moves slowly, right? That that, you know, those are percentage point inching up. That's not like 10 percentage points. It's percentage points. But, but we're part of several national studies funded by the Gates Foundation and by Ask You and other organizations, trying to look at the sort of equity trajectory, if you will, that is informed by this. Certainly things like the Honors Living Learning Community help enormously. So the graduation rate there is substantially impacted and, and up. And that is largely a function of the kinds of support that our colleagues from Prudential and others have given to really try to boost the ability of those students to graduate in four years rather than six or eight years, which is the more typical national graduation rate. So that's something we're really working on. In terms of the homelessness, the city of Newark has, you probably know this, but has a big effort going on right now to build approachable, I would argue, homeless facilities. Not to do the standard shelter, but to do modules and pods that are really much more approachable and, and, and are indeed getting used much more. We've been involved through the Newark Alliance with them, but we have not been centrally the people in that. It's been more Invest Newark and the other city agencies that have been doing that with the Newark Alliance.
Okay, thank you. Roberta and then Susan Martin on Zoom. Go ahead, Roberta.
Okay. Nancy, first of all, thank you for that great presentation and also for everything you've done in Newark, for Newark and Newark Rutgers. I have a question. People, I knew lots of people who, lots of immigrants from my generation who came into Newark and their main goal was leaving Newark. And they've gone to the various suburbs of New Jersey. Now, of course, there was no such thing as anchor institutions. Have you done any studies as to the effect of actually getting the students and their families to stay in Newark?
Yeah. As a social scientist, I'll say, I wouldn't say we've done very thorough studies, but the anecdotal evidence that we have, and we take that issue very seriously, is that in fact, more of our students and their families are staying than had happened before. So we're seeing enrollments into graduate programs, we're seeing enrollments in, we're seeing students who are placed in the other big anchor institutions. So we run a program, a wonderful program that we do have a lot of evidence about called Braven. It's, we team up with a nonprofit in Chicago called Braven. And our corporate and other partners are very strong supporters of it. They do a big, a course on our campus that we're going to try to have as an opt-in or opt-out. In other words, we're going to opt-in all our sophomores and junior transfers to this Braven course. It involves career leadership training, internships and placements. That kind of thing is going to have a big effect on keeping people in Newark. So one of the most important things for our students is to, and for those immigrant family students in particular, and we talked, we have a wonderful student organization of undocumented, for undocumented students, and they are incredible. And one of the things they talk about is the social capital networks that they need. That's the key. Our students can blow it away in terms of actually doing well once they get there, but they need the social capital networks that connect them to those opportunities. And so that, to me, is the key issue. It's getting them into college and through college and then getting them out into the world, whether it's in graduate school or in well-paid, strong jobs. And the Braven data show a 20, typically a 25% increase in strong jobs with pathways to opportunity, having taken that course relative to national peers. So that's the kind of thing we're doing to try to study it.
Susan Martin on Zoom.
Thank you, Nancy Semet for that presentation. I grew up in Newark, so I only wish that more of this had been done years and years ago. My question is, what the, has, what has been the impact on the curriculum and on the fourth general student body of having this kind of, of anchor, Rutgers being an anchor? You talked a lot about this, different centers that are doing work, but what's happening with the core curriculum?
I love that question. Thank you, Susan. Yes, I should have talked more about curriculum because one of the things that's been amazing is the number of courses that have come as a function of the anchor work. And these are courses that embed students and faculty with community partners and co-teach with community partners. So one of my favorite examples is what, we are the, the home base for what's called the Humanities Action Lab, which is actually a network of universities and communities in about 21 cities and, and locations across the country and in Mexico and Colombia. And they, and the latest project was to look at the climates of inequality, climates of inequality. In Newark, we did a court, they did a course with the Community Development Corp in the Ironbound on the, the stories of climate injustice and environmental justice. And our students were just phenomenal in terms of charting both the science of it and the narrative of what the impact on families were, of, of the pollution that is in the Ironbound. It's just one example of a course. We've done, the newest Americans that I mentioned has a whole course sequence with it. Lives in Translation has a, just a phenomenal, they have NEH funding, National Endowment for the Humanities funding, to do literally translation kinds of credentialing of students. And, and it's just a phenomenal program. The STEM area, so the geoscience I talked about, Ashaki Roof, has a whole curriculum built around, and a lot of graduate courses actually built around the notion of what it means to do anchor work in communities with geoscience monitoring and toxic lead remediation, et cetera. So yes, I can name a whole lot of them. Criminal Justice obviously does a lot, law school. I talked about the centers, but those centers are involving, they're, they're hiring students as fellows, and so they're involving a lot of that. Rutgers Business School has really picked this up. The Supply Chain Department is doing a lot of student engagement. Our students, one of the biggest, biggest new corps in Newark is Mars. You know, Mars that produces all that candy we shouldn't eat and all that stuff. Well, our supply chain students did consulting for them on what sustainable packaging would look like. So at least if the candy's bad, at least you have a good package. Just some examples. And it's, so it's really all across our, our schools and colleges. They've picked it up.
Pat?
I just want to make a comment. I have followed Nancy since she joined the Rutgers faculty, remember the Governor's Higher Education Council? And we heard about Nancy's plans for Rutgers Newark. And I want to commend her. She's delivered. For the city and for the university. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, but I really want to say it takes a village. This is not, I mean, in some ways, the theme, as you know, Pat, of this is that it really takes collaboration. That is the key. And I have a phenomenal collaborative team, some of whom are sitting right here. And, you know, it just can't happen without them. Plus, I have to say, we have the best students in the world here, so.
Any other questions for Chancellor Cantor? Well, Chancellor Cantor, I think this is the last time you're presenting before the Board of Trustees. And Pat stole a little bit of my thunder, but on the behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank you for all of your hard work at Rutgers Newark and for keeping us informed with what's going on here. Thank you very much. Like to move on with our agenda now. I call your attention to the minutes from our December 7, 2023 meeting that were posted on the portal. Ask if there are any additions or corrections to those minutes. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? I see you, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes are considered passed. I call your attention to the minutes of the Executive Committee meeting from March 5, 2024. They're in the, your booklet and the portal for you to read. I want to move on now to the Nominated Committee, our proposed slated nominees. And I'm going to ask Dr. Deborah Lynch, Chair of the Nominated Committee, to present her report. Dr. Lynch?
Thank you, Dr. Krust. The nominating committee of the Board of Trustees met 10 times between August 30, 2023 and March 7, 2024. The proposed recommended slated nominees was previously posted on the board portal for review. I would now like to present the nominating committee's recommendations for trustee member of the Board of Governors, candidates for the election of chair and vice chairs of the Board of Trustees and trustee emeritus.
I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Sue to take the chair of the Board of Trustees for the election of the trustee member of the Board of Governors.
Thank you, Chairman. It was a long walk. Dr. Lynch, will you please continue with your report?
Dr. Lynch, will you please continue with your report?
On behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend Alan M. Cross Jr. as a trustee member of the Board of Governors to succeed William E. Best for the term July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2020, 2030. Madam Chair, I so move.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lynch. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can bring Dr. Cross back. I'd ask the board to join me in congratulating Dr. Cross for his selection.
Thank you all. I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Su to leave the room at this time so we can proceed with the voting for Chair. Dr. Lynch, please continue your report.
Timed out. Okay, on behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend the following nomination for Chair as indicated for the term July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. Chair, Ms. Amy B. Mansu. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I hear a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All again? Any abstention? Thank you. Congratulations, Chair-elect, Ms. Su. I'd like to ask Vice Chair Johnson and Ms. Papamoukou to step out of the room so we can discuss our voting for Vice Chair.
I don't think so.
Dr. Lynch, please continue your report.
On behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend the following nominations for Vice Chairs as indicated for the term July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. Vice Chair, Mr. Kenneth R. Johnson, and Vice Chair, Ms. Mary Papamoukou. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? Thank you. Bring back in Kim. Congratulations, Ken and Mary. Dr. Lynch, please continue your report.
Pursuant to the bylaw, Section V1A2B, a trustee emeritus will be elected no earlier than at the first fall meeting after his or her term on the Board of Trustees ends and shall begin their term at the next trustee meeting following their election. On behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend the following individual as trustee emeritus, Mr. Nemesh Babari. So, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I hear a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All against, please say nay. Any abstentions?
This concludes the report of the nominating committee.
Anything else to report, Dr. Lynch?
Nope, this concludes the report of the nominating committee.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Harris for the report of the Trustee Committee on Philanthropy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report was posted, so I know all of you read it. So I, I won't be, I won't be redundant except a little bit. We met with Jean, the head of financial aid, because we wanted to know where the money went. You know, who were the students who received the aid? And, and what was the composition of the aid they received? And how did Scarlet Promise fit into that package? Scarlet Promise fits into that package of financial aid, but it is also designed to meet unmet needs that just come up. And the source of that mission really started with Bill Best. Now, I know many of you, maybe all of you have heard this story, but Bill was talking to a student. And she said, because she couldn't afford her books for one class that semester, she was going to have to attend another semester. And Bill said, well, how much are the books? And she said, $182. He said, I can write you a check for that right now. That's the beginning of the Scarlet Promise grant. I can write you a check for that right now, so you won't have to spend another whole semester in school. We learned something that you would intuitively know, but building up this endowment increases retention and graduation. But it's not just that. It's that the students know that their governing board, many generations removed from them, cares about what their experience is in our school. So that Scarlet Promise, $182. President Holloway keeps increasing the goal. And it's not because, you know, he's, you know, over ambitious. It's because we are so damn good. You have to move the goalposts for some people. We set a goal when it was just us. We set a goal to, I forget what it was, reach 3 million or 5 million in 10 years. And we reached it in three years. And we have continued to overachieve. Then President Holloway came in here and it just skyrocketed. But one of the things the trustees noted at the meeting was that we used to drive this train and now we're just passengers. And I think we need to reclaim our train. And it's not an issue of pride. Because I'll tell you the truth. None of our names will be known 20 years from now. The students won't know, even probably won't even know Bill Best's name. What they will know is that the spirit of this university, the spirit that we care for one another, that we care from generation to generation to generation, sounding downright biblical now, but we keep caring that the governing board of this institution cares enough about its students that we want them to stay, we want them to graduate, and we want them to have that Scarlet pride because they got that Scarlet promise. And it's up to us. So I know all of us give, all of us give. The trustees give enormous amounts of money every year to Rutgers. We can be proud of that. We need to claim Scarlet Promise. So even though the law school's going to get my money every year, so is Scarlet Promise. Because just as the law school changed the arc of my life, Scarlet Promise could do that for so many others of students we don't even know and who will never know us. So we want 100% participation. We need 100% participation. But that's not enough. I'm asking, we are asking that each one of us get one of our friends, just one this year, to give. At least give them the opportunity to participate in this promise to our students of future generations. Because it's an honor. And that legacy, if we reclaim our train, the students for generations will know that their governing board, from long ago through today through tomorrow, cares about them. That spirit is important. You can go to a lot of universities, and universities have personalities. Rutgers' personality is important, and part of it is Scarlet Promise. So I'm asking you, if I could sing, I'd say I ain't too proud to beg. But I'm asking you, reclaim this train. Reclaim it in our name. Because that's where it began, and that's where it should stay. Yeah, we got a $50 million goal, but we can make it. We can all make it together. Thank you.
Well said, David. I want to tell President Holloway, we made this goal. I don't want to say, sorry, we didn't make it. And I want to report back to you in June that we made these goals. So let's work hard over the next two days. Let's get out there, and let's get our friends, our networks, our people to pony up some money. Any questions at all for David? Bob?
Yeah, two, two-part question. Just to clarify, the purpose of Scarlet Promise, I believe, but correct me if I'm wrong, in its entirety is for unmet needs. Does it go beyond the unmet needs, or is it fully for the unmet needs? That's question number one. Question number two is, how do we marry those needs? Or how does the university marry those needs with the pot of money that we have?
Scarlet Promise can be part of the financial aid package. So, and it can also come outside the Scarlet, the financial aid package. So the unmet needs part of it is in excess of the financial aid package.
And, and do we know, David, the balance between the financial aid package part of that and the unmet need part of that?
It varies. I mean, we, we didn't ask that specific question, but it, what Jean told us is that it varies depending on how the needs, the needs come up. I mean, just think about some of the needs. During the pandemic, when people were losing their relatives to the plague, there were more unmet needs, right? The, the example that, that founded this, you know, you find, a student comes in and says, I just don't have the money for the books, or I just lost my job. That occurs, you know, at varying degrees. It's always there, but it's going to occur in varying degrees. And it's up to the financial aid office, they are matching. They're figuring out, helping the student solve the problem, this pot of money is there. There's all, there's, there's the current giving and the endowment. As I said last meeting, the endowment allows us to keep giving after we're gone.
Okay, thank you.
So Bob, what we're doing here is we're trying to build an endowment, just like we have certain Board of Trustees endowment that kick off income. And we vote on them every year on where they go. We fund the food pantries on each of the campuses, the emergency use, and current new Scarlet Promise funds, we vote in every year. What we're trying to do is build an endowment that will create something in perpetuity where this income will come off and be used by some future board for our students. Just like many, many years ago, the Board of Trustees had these endowments that we now dictate for use. Typically, money that comes out of the endowment for something like this, we would have the offices of financial aid and the student aid offices kind of decide how to distribute that money. But typically, it would be used for emergency use funds and also used for tuition assistance. But we need to build that endowment, we need to build that thing. So in 30 years, there's another chair sitting in this chair, and he's calling on a vote from that Board of Trustees to give a certain amount of money towards our students. So that's what we're trying to do here. Any other questions for David? Great, thank you. Thank you, David. I'd like to call on Mr. Kropovka for the report on Joint Committee on Investments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our committee met about, for about two and a half hours on February 26. And I can't thank David enough and Chair Allen for stressing the importance of, of what we do as stewards of this endowment. We talked about four important topics, one around asset allocation, second about spending rate, performance, as well as our intern, our growing intern population. So let's touch on a few of them. Asset allocation, obviously, we want to continue growing that, growing our collective endowment. You know, we think about ability to generate returns and, and the risk that we need to take to do that. So we've agreed on, on what our asset allocation will continue to be. There are largely no changes to that, you know, 74% are in growth assets, about 18% are in diversifying strategies that'll not have a lot of, call it correlation or dependence on what the market does, as well as about 8% in liquidity. The second, the second topic that we work very closely with Mike Gower on is around our spending rate. Currently, we've agreed to keep that at 4%. What that means for the endowment is that we're throwing off about $80 million to go back to the university. And again, we'd like to continue to grow that endowment so we can throw off more and more dollars to help our students and programs. The third topic around AUM, timely given it is a day before Giving Day. As of March 13, we were at $1.99 billion. So I don't know if anybody in this room could help us get over the $2 billion mark, but, or, or your one friend or 17 friends, so that would be wonderful. That's as of March 13. On a performance side, the, as of December 31, we had about 11.5% return, which was very consistent with the benchmark. Benchmark was up 11.6%, so some pretty strong performance for the endowment. We did have some Nakubo rankings, which have hundreds of hundreds of institutions. And I'll just provide a few statistics there. We are the 76th largest endowment in the country. That's up just one point. I know we're going to change that after tomorrow. And the, you know, we're second in New Jersey. There's another school that's down Route 27 that is fifth in the country. But hopefully, that can be aspirational at some point. On the competitive performance side, just as you think about the last year, US public equity markets did very, very well. And therefore, smaller endowments, who tend to have less private or access to private investments, did substantively better. So the all-public institutional average was about 8.5%. This is through June 2023. Our Big Ten peer average was about 5.4%, and we were tied for fifth coming in at about 6.9%. So a pretty good, you know, pretty good turnout being in the top half of, relative to our peers. And the last topic, something we've been really proud of, of being able to do, is from an intern perspective. We now have six interns joining in the summer. Very proud to say we have four from New Brunswick, one from this great city, as well as one from Camden. And that makes about 34 total since 2017. This ends my remarks. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Jean?
What exactly do the interns do?
So they work for, for Jason, but they do a fair amount of, of topics. So they work for Jason, but they do a fair amount of topics. You know, things like diligence, so diligencing, private equity, managers, selection, topics that are, that they've looked at are things like, do we go active versus passive? So how do we, how do we employ active management within the endowment? Those are two topics. But they get an unbelievable amount of experience. And I'd say that's kind of on the, you know, on the day-to-day of what they do. But I think, and we could send a list of where they're getting placed because they're able to put this internship on their resumes. And I just think it's been unbelievable, the amount of, you know, top-tier organizations that these interns, because they can put those on their resumes, has really catapulted them into, you know, getting some really amazing employment opportunities. Great question. Thank you.
Yes, Chuck.
Gary, I don't know. Okay, now it's on. Thank you. Good report. There's been a lot in the press lately about Wall Street firms backing off on their commitments to diversity, et cetera. And I just wonder, you know, our intern program can help build that pipeline. I just wonder if you could offer any stats on the makeup of the intern class?
Sure, yeah. I do, thank you for that question. It is critically important. I would say, maybe I'll answer it and use this as an opportunity to answer it in two ways. One of which is, you know, the endowment, for every manager, every, we do have surveys that we ask all of our managers to fill out, as well as, you know, people that are coming to pitch for us. And so we do actively, you know, understand how diverse these organizations are and kind of think about that as we choose managers as well. But to answer Chuck's specific question, of the 34 interns, I have some stats here, fortunately. Chuck and I did not get together on this beforehand. But in terms of, you know, we defined diverse candidates as non-white males was about 85% in terms of that definition of diverse. Females represent about 38% of our, have represented about 38% of our interns. And then in terms of just location, Camden is about 6% and Newark is about 12% of the population. So, you know, pretty diverse. Thank you for that question, Chuck.
And Mike?
Gary, where does our endowment rank in terms of size with respect to the Big Ten?
So we are part of the Big Ten. No, we are, we're not in the top 10. We, I think we are dead last, but we have a lot of upward movement to, as opportunities. Kimberly's going to change all of that, as well as everyone in this room, so. But we are close. I, you know, I'm hoping we'll, there's a couple of schools that are definitely within distance, so we're getting there.
Any other questions for Gary? Okay, thank you, Gary. I'd like to call on Mr. Rhodes to give the Diversity, Inclusion, and Outreach Report. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of our Chair, Terry Rodriguez, I'm happy to deliver the report from our committee meeting. We met on February 27. And as we continue to refine and improve our outreach efforts as we learn more about this each and every year, we focus on items that will help us inform committee members in the future. We had four agenda items, and we are working on creating a video that could be used by committee members, perhaps when they go to a board meeting to talk about Rutgers, maybe a 90-second video of such. Just inspirational to, you know, to lead the conversation and to get people thinking about how great Rutgers is, but also to encourage them to become part of Rutgers, to serve the university in some way in the future, and to introduce them to our, to our efforts regarding diversity and inclusion on the Board of Trustees. We also discussed the creation of a pamphlet that can act both as a lead-in when we do some outreach to individuals, to see if we could, you know, speak to other organizations, but also as a leave behind, as we leave a committee or a board meeting, for people to have as a takeaway with not only the information we discuss, but contact information and to continue that possible chain. We also discussed, as we've learned, sometimes cold calls with phone calls are not very effective, so creating an email or a letter template that we can reach out to, reach out to various organizations. Again, discussing our diversity, inclusion efforts for Rutgers University. And to, this was Sarah's actually recommendation. She's working in, you know, in some of these, in her professional life, you know, in outreach and trying to get people to do what you want them to do. Finally, we discussed the idea of using internal resources here at Rutgers who have access to diverse organizations, diverse populations here at the university, also university alumni, to utilize these resources as leads for our efforts to, again, reach out to them, inform them of the nominations process, to get people interested in becoming a member of the Rutgers University Board of Trustees, all the while with an eye on wanting to make sure that the board's composition reflects that of the state of New Jersey and letting the people know that it's important to us that they should consider that. And with that, that concludes the report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Great. I'd like to move on now and ask Vice Chairman Sue to present the report of the Task Force on Legislative Engagement.
Thank you, Chairman Cross. I am, behalf of Michael Duham, I am reporting out today. The chairman has already shared with you the letters that you've received that we discussed at December 11 meeting. Indeed, there was a real opportunity for us to showcase our wares and make sure that the individual members understood the importance of Rutgers in the district. On February 6, Mr. McDonough shared and updated on the legislative outreach. The task force then organized scheduling all of these events, including that with leadership. We also have some show and tell today. You will get, or your elected official will get a little red envelope. And in that red envelope will be a letter indicating that on behalf of the Board of Trustees, they will receive the Block R in chocolate. For those of you who have, live in districts with more than one member, Senator Smith will receive 15 of these. So I would encourage you to make sure that you go and help him enjoy those. We have been able to acquire a couple of meetings with the leadership, and I hope that you also have been able to schedule those meetings with your legislator. Let me encourage you. If by chance, your legislator is too busy to meet in the office or you're having trouble getting through staff, this is budget time. Do not be above synagogue, church, shop, right, anywhere that you may see your elected official, because honestly, it's more important for them to know that you are there as a local individual and say to them, I know you see me at the ballgames all the time, but I don't know if you knew that I'm a Board of Trustees member and I'm very, you know, passionate about my work and we have a lot to show off. And I know you got a letter in your office, but if by chance you didn't, I'm more than glad to email it back to you. Those personal connections matter. Soccer fields are also fair game. Anything that is in the district is fair game from my perspective. We do have members that, as indicated from Chairman Cross, did not have any significant, any personal individual. Where those individuals served in leadership or specific chairman, we also are trying to reach out to them as well for those of us who had personal relationships with those individuals. I have nothing else to report, Chairman, and I speak on behalf of Mr. Duham.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for Amy? Okay, great. Pete, thank you very much for putting this together for us. Pete's office has been working tirelessly to help us to do, meet this goal and to stay connected with legislators, and it will pay benefits for us someday down the road. I don't know when, but it will. Thank you, Pete. I'd like to ask Mr. Gower, Executive Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, and University Treasurer, to give the Board of Governors Committee on Audit Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Audit met on February 1. For matters for information, Mr. Michael Zool, Deputy Athletic Director and Chief Operating Officer, presented on the Fiscal 24 Budget of the Division of Collegiate Athletics, as well as the financial report that was submitted in NCAA in January. Mr. Matt Potteroff, Deputy Athletic Director for Risk Management, Chief Compliance Officer, presented on recent NCAA updates on regulations and athletic compliance topics. I provided the annual report on procurement of professional services for Fiscal 23. Michelle Noren, Senior Vice President, Chief Information Officer. Mr. Guy Albertini, Associate VP and Chief Information Security Officer, provided the now three times a year cybersecurity update to the committee. Ms. Rachel Honig, Vice President and Chief University Compliance Officer, gave an update on the annual enterprise risk management assessment program. Mr. Eugene Simon, Associate Vice President, Deputy Chief University Compliance Officer, provided an update on professional compliance trading and data from the university ethics and compliance helpline. And finally, Mr. Doug Douglas Orr, Chief Audit Executive, provided a status on the current audit plan, highlights from recently completed reviews, and Chair Cross's favorite, the implementation status of recommendations from past audits. Mr. Chair, so this is my report.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Great. Seeing none, I'd like to go on to old business. Is there any old business? Does anyone have any new business? Okay, I have two things. Number one is, your regalia is in the room right next door. If you're going to be going to graduations, which I hope you are, your regalia is there. Please don't leave here without picking it up because you want to look proper up on the dais.
I don't want to carry it back.
And Kim doesn't want to carry it back? Okay, number two is, we received a gift when you came in from the University Communication Marketing, which I believe is Kim Manning's department. And I just wanted to thank her for that. There's a nice Rutgers pen and a nice Rutgers tie. And Mary is, she has a scarf. So there's scarf for the lady, so please get out there. And Ken is actually, has the tie on. So looks great on you, Ken. Let's get out there and wear that, and thank you for, Kim. I have nothing else, so may I have a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All against? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you.